Good evening and welcome to the Sunshine Meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is 5:40, excuse me, yeah, 6:43, excuse me, didn't bring my glasses. On Thursday, September 7, 2017. Roll call Michelle please.
Councilwoman Allard, present. Councilman Azar, present. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Crossed, present. Councilman Devon, here. Councilman Elliott, here. Councilman Garrison, here. Councilman Morris, here. Councilman Nasser, present. Councilman Nation, here. All are present.
Okay. This is our Sunshine Meeting where there will be no action on any of our items that are on the agenda. If you're here to speak about anything that is not on our agenda, next week we allow 30 minutes of public comments to do so. If anybody needs an agenda, it's up here on the first pew. That being said, I will go ahead with first order of business. Michelle please.
General Order 7, 2017, as amended, amending City Code, Chapter 2, Article 9, Section 20117, Police Pension Fund previously payable.
Is there a petitioner to speak on this, please?
Council Eddie Felling, City Attorney. This issue with the police pension matters been ongoing for some time now. We have some pensioners here this evening. I, over the past couple of weeks, I've been in contact with Noah Gamble, who's helped kind of take the lead and represent some of these pensioners. At this point, the administration has a proposed plan. We have a scheduled meeting set up tomorrow at 3 o'clock at Mr. Gamble's office with some of the pensioners, Mr. Gamble to review that. What I'd ask here this evening is allow us to have that meeting, see if we can all get on the same page and bring something to the table here for the council, which I'm very confident that both sides will come to an agreement. Anyway, to afford us that opportunity, we'll have something hopefully as soon as that meeting concludes or early next week. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on General Order 7, 2017? Eddie, and I know a lot of the, oh, sorry, sorry. Welcome again.
Ray Watts, retired policeman, live at 2208 Seaberry Avenue, Terre Haute City. I just heard about this meeting today, and I suppose we're supposed to have a few at 3 o'clock, is that correct? My contention is going to be, just go by the state law. Now, everybody knows the city's broke, and I know you people have a tough job to do, and I feel sorry for you, because information is very hard to get, and I guess I'm in the same boat sometimes. But I'm asking that we basically stick by the state law and get this money back into this fund, and so the mayor can't handle this fund. We want it in a separate account, and, you know, so we won't have to be here and bother you people. You have enough headaches without us. I don't know how you do it, and I'm glad you are doing it, because it's, the truthful information is hard to find. And so I guess I'm going to leave you with, I'm satisfied with the city attorney, I feel sorry for him too. Basically, good luck, you better be looking for a job, but that's just my vote. So I'm asking that you look at the state law very hardly, and let's go from there. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
May I respond to that just briefly? Two things on that. I have some information that was ready this evening. I'd like to have the opportunity to present that to the pensioners at that meeting tomorrow before I distribute it to the council and make that available, but as soon as that meeting's concluded, I'll forward it to the council and give a brief rundown with the status of that account from 2004 on. One other very key piece of information that's come up, I know Councilman Elliott and President Nasser, you were both in the meeting we had with the DLGF and the State Board of Accounts. To my understanding at this point, and it was made abundantly clear in that meeting, that currently we're not in violation of anything with regard to the use of the account currently. So I want to make that clear to the council here today, that as we stand, we are in compliance with how we're using that account.
Well, because I said there never had any issues with any other committees doing that, is part of the, because it was a negative balance, so.
I believe the X words were used. Correct.
One of the things that I, I'm just baffled by Eddie, and I know a lot of the people were frustrated here on the council last month that we keep, continue to have this discussion. Why are we waiting until tomorrow to have a meeting with these guys when we talked about how we had, there's a sense of urgency to get it fixed before we voted on it next week?
This conversation's been ongoing. Part of the issue that we've had from the administrative side is to fix that, figuring out what would appease both sides. Again, having heard the news from the State Board of Accounts that, again, having it in the pool where it's at now is a non-concern to them whatsoever.
And when did we have that meeting?
That was a month ago.
Okay.
So again, from the administration's point of view, and again, I guess I won't speak from the administration, but for myself, where we are now is not in any violation. So anything that we would propose as a change is going to be trying to bridge this relationship with the pensioners. It's nothing we would be required to do pursuant to state law. So part of that is, is figuring out a way in which we can reach that goal, where we can, you know, meet in the middle, not necessarily make everybody happy, but get to a point where we can all walk away from this and hopefully not ever have to revisit it. And it's taken some time to put a proposed plan together, and I think, I feel pretty confident with what we're going to propose. And I have had ongoing discussions with Mr. Gamble. Obviously, it's difficult to reach out to the number of pensioners we have individually. I've been using him as a point person here. So I think we can hammer this out tomorrow, and again, we won't be voting on this. Again, I couldn't even propose really an amendment here tonight for consideration. We will have a proposed amendment from the administration well before our next meeting.
On top of what we already amended last month?
Absolutely.
Speaking for myself, I'm not going to table it, so hopefully you guys can come to a conclusion.
No matter what, there will be a proposed amendment.
Okay. Anybody else on the council having a question? Councilman Azar?
Eddie, is there a way we can have something prior to the meeting so we're, we don't want to be, you know, looking at it that night?
I will forward the financial information as soon as our meeting's complete tomorrow afternoon, early evening. I already have an amendment put together, but again, I'd like to have this meeting first, again, to see if we can all come to an agreement, so we're not amending and amending and having 10 versions that are floating out there brought to you last minute.
And without getting into any specifics, will that hopefully provide a way to put the money back into this fund incrementally, incrementally, incremented?
I will say the most important thing about the proposed plan is, again, even though we were told that it's not required, is segregating the account, so it is not part of the cash pool.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thanks. Next order of business, please.
Resolution 17, 2017, Designating an Area Comleged, Located as 1450 Wabash Avenue and 1451 Eagle Street, Terre Haute, Indiana, is Economic Revitalization Area for the Purpose of a Nine-Year Real Property Tax Abatement. Miller Parrot Lofts LP, this is for confirmation.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Lou Britton, I'm representing the petitioner. Miller Parrot Lofts, which is a cooperative venture of the Sisters of Providence and Flaherty and Collins. We discussed this at your meeting last month. The plan is to rehabilitate the former Lighthouse Mission property into 54 apartments, 42 one-bedroom and 12 two-bedroom, and office space to be used primarily in connection with the residents there. The projected cost, construction is 8.9 million, total development costs are 11.7 million. We have published the required notice, and it will come before you for a vote next week. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Resolution 17, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Still a great project, Lou. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next order of business, please. Thank you.
Special Ordinance 33, 2017, Res zoning property located at 1450 Wabash Avenue and 1451 Eagle Street, area planning gave a favorable recommendation with conditions.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
Again, I'm Lou Britton, representing the petitioner. This is a obviously related matter. The property is currently zoned as an industrial use, and obviously we need to change that to a residential use in order to convert it into apartments. We did not go with a straight residential use request because of the office space. Residential R3 does not permit office space. We discussed with area plan the possibility of including the property in the downtown zoning district, which would allow for office space, but they really didn't want to jump over some properties and spread the downtown zoning out that far and have gaps in between, so we settled on the planned development aspect. In addition to that, we, since we weren't in the downtown district and the building sits right on the sidewalk on both sides of the corner there, we needed to get a variance on the setbacks that would be required in an R3 zoning classification, but wouldn't have been required in downtown. And BZA acted on that yesterday morning and unanimously approved those variances as well, as well as a setback variance on the parking. So that's, it's all related to the same project. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 33, 2017? Counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business, please.
Special Ordinance 34, 2017, Res zoning property located at 1587 Wheeler Avenue. I'm sorry, area planning gave a favorable recommendation.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight representing petitioner, Landmark Property Development. This property is currently zoned R1. Petitioners requesting that it be rezoned C2. They are also, the owners, I believe in your packet there's a site plan. As you'll see, this is a small triangle of property. The petitioner is the owner of the property to the west and to the north across Wheeler. They're asking for this to be rezoned to match the zoning of the property to their west. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 35, 2017? Or, excuse me, 34, 2017? Counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Michelle please.
Special Ordinance 35, 2017, Authorizing the Issuance of Indiana Multi-Family Housing Revenue Bonds, Silver Birch of Terre Haute Project. You have a proposed amendment before you.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
Good evening, Counsel. I'm Darren Jolos of Vermillion Development, here to talk about Silver Birch of Terre Haute. And by the way, it's a 93,000 square foot, 119-unit affordable assisted living community that will support low and moderate income seniors that can no longer live independently but do not need the nursing home level of care. So it's that assisted living level of care. This project is projected to create 35 FTE. It will have about $1,006,000 in payroll plus benefits for the employees, and will have a total development cost of $23.5 million. It's a 3.3 acre parcel that's located along the west side of Lafayette, just north of Locust, south of Second. It's about a half mile south of Union Hospital, about a half mile north of ISU, and this area is known as the RIC District, and I thought this was informative, because the Rural Health Innovative Collaborative described its purpose as creating and improving the quality of and access to health care for residents by attracting new health care and new residential development. So I think we've checked both those boxes, and we'd like to think we will check both those boxes with this project. We've been through zoning, as well as an alley vacation before various city departments, and with the intent of breaking ground yet late this fall, we're here to talk about the financing of that. So I'm going to hand the microphone over to Jim Crawford of Creed Devol.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. These bonds to be issued by the city, the proceeds of which will be loaned to the developer for construction of the project, are conduit bonds. There's actually no obligation on the part of the city to repay these bonds. Bondholders are looking solely to the mortgage in the facility, security interest in the equipment, and the loan repayments being assigned to the bond trustee for the benefit of the bondholders. Again, there's no liability on the part of the city to use any revenues, no financial or legal liability with respect to the members of the council or the administration. The bonds will be publicly sold. The ordinance calls for a maximum of 40 years. In actuality, there'll probably be a tranche of 10 years, another tranche of 20 years. We estimate the last deal that was closed was 5.65 percent. The ordinance allows up to 7 percent. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 35, 2017? Counsel?
Hold on.
Oh, sorry. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Donald Hyde. I'd like to speak on this to the council. First of all, let me state 100% not rock solid support. But with that said, because the way you guys conduct your meetings, both the one I attended earlier and so far this one, you don't tell the public much. It's like playing poker with people that don't want to show their cards. I have a lot of questions, and I don't know why you don't. Now, based on my understanding of the history of senior citizens' living quarters in this town, and again, I'm all for it, however, I don't think we do very much to aid in the development of these things that make it possible to get, so that the senior citizens can get around this town. Again, the key word here is that you're building a community center that the people don't need to live in a person home. I'm all for that. The older I get, the more I'm for that. I think you guys will be doing the same thing in a few years. However, that doesn't change the fact that you have to go to the grocery store, have to do some shopping, need to get to a park, and this particular spot of land they bought sits on 13th Street, past Locust and not the 8th Avenue. Now, it's close to the hospital, I'll give you that. There's a lot of positives to this, but there's a lot of things that'll have to be done. And I might have to name a few, but I don't want to throw any wrenches into it. You guys are smart enough to understand what I'm talking about. Also, yes, there's going to be a plan, and again, this is where you, as a city council, need to apply for state and federal monies. I'm going to do that. And the reason I say state and federal monies is you need to come up with some form of transportation, a way to get the sidewalks fixed, a way to get the roads fixed, a way to get some transportation to these senior citizens, like the bus system, don't exist right now. And again, not, it's the small things that matter. If you want to build this, I'm all for it. I think it's well overdue, and I'll throw no monkey wrenches into it, but I do ask you to start thinking about other questions. And where they're wanting to locate this, you're going to have to fix some sidewalks, you're going to have to fix some streets, and you're going to have to make some way to get people to and from the grocery store. 13th and Locust to 13th and 8th Avenue, the nearest grocery stores are the two Kroger stores. Now, how are these senior citizens going to get up 13th Street to Fort Harrison, to go to Kroger's North? Or how are they going to get down to Wabash Avenue, then turn and go up to 25th Street to get to Kroger's East? And if there is other grocery stores that I'm not thinking of, please inform me, because I know there's none. That's one problem, that the city council should be looking at, not these people. You should, making plans so that people can live better. Like I said, sometimes it's the small things that matter. No matter who you are, what age you are, what race, what religion, don't care, everybody has to go to the grocery store and get food. The ability to get to that grocery store is the biggest sense of independence there is. Then add to that, when you're talking about senior citizens, the ability to get to a doctor. Well, you built the place sitting on top of Union Hospital. My point about Union Hospital aside, it's there. You can get to the hospital. You still got to get to the grocery store. And there's other things too, in quality of life. That's all I wanted to say, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this? Counsel? Next order of business, Michelle please.
Resolution 14, 2017, Designating an Area Comleged, Located as 4400 Maple Avenue, Terre Haute, Indiana, is Economic Revitalization Area for the Purpose of a Ten-Year Personal Property Tax Abatement, GATX Corporation, this is for adoption.
Is there a petitioner to speak on this, please?
Good evening, council members. My name is Steve Webb. I'm the president of the Terre Haute Economic Development Corporation. It's my pleasure here tonight to kind of kick off, to speak to you about a very exciting project for our community, GATX Corporation. I've said to some of my colleagues that this is probably the most significant company that few people have ever heard of, unless you're in the rail industry. GATX is a company that's been in business since 1898. They've been in the city of Terre Haute since 1973. They're proposing a $39 million expansion at their facility, which is on East Maple Avenue. And with that, I'll turn it over to the folks from GATX, and they can tell you more details.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Young. I'm the Vice President and Chief Tax Officer of GATX. I'm responsible for global tax operations associated with GATX Corporation. I'm going to, I'll start by introducing the small army of representatives from GATX that we brought along with us for this presentation. With me is James Chapman, who is our Vice President of North American Service Centers. We also have Lou Yanis, who's the Director of Indirect Tax within my group. We have Corey Lester, who's a Senior Manager of Repair Centers. We have Ryan Brock, who is a Service Center Manager here in Terre Haute. And we also have Dean Yuminsky, who is a partner with Crow Horoff, who's been helping GATX move this project along. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to present our proposal and for your consideration of the abatement request that we have. I'm going to provide an overview of GATX Corporation to Steve's point, since we're a company that's been here for 44 years, and not many people are aware of what we do and who we are. I'll provide an overview of the company, and then James is going to go into some of the details, specific details with regard to the project that we're working on, and then Bill's going to provide some highlights of the tax abatement schedules. So we've passed out and provided to everyone a PowerPoint presentation. If you could flip to page three, I'll start off just giving you an overview of GATX Corporation. As Steve said, we have been around, GATX has been around since 1898, and its worldwide headquarters is in Chicago, where it's always been. Over the course of, you know, 117 years, we have expanded our operations into Canada, Mexico, we are in Austria, we are in a number of European countries, we have an operation right now in India, and also we have a greenfield operation that we started in Russia. So we're a company that has a number of operations worldwide. In addition to that, we own a steamship company on the Great Lakes. It's called American Steamship Corporation. So we operate the vessels on the Great Lakes, and we also have a very, a very strong partnership with Rolls-Royce Jet Engines out of the UK. So we're a company that is primarily focused on rail, but we also have other business interests throughout the world. You know, at the end of 2016, we were a $7.4 billion assets, and we have about approximately 151,000 rail cars worldwide. I think the takeaway from this, takeaway from this slide is that GATX has been around a long time, and we plan on being around a long time, so we're not going anywhere in the near future. Moving on to the next page, our vision, and this is something that we use in our day-to-day operations as a company, as we strive to be recognized as the finest railcar leasing company in the world, we like to think that we are, by both our customers, our shareholders, our employees, and the communities where we operate, such as here in, I mean, in Terre Haute. We have a very disciplined business approach, capital allocation approach, and our focus, obviously, because we're a publicly traded corporation, is our returns to our shareholders, which is very important for us. As I move on to the next page, I spoke to a little bit of GATX's strong global presence. As I said, we have 151 railcars, 151,000 railcars worldwide, and we have about 600 locomotives. There are 17 vessels on the Great Lakes, and with regard to our partnership with Rolls-Royce, we have an interest in about 435 aircraft engines that are on lease with various entities. So this gives you a good idea of snapshot of where we do business throughout the world. We are continuously looking to expand, so this is something that, you know, we're pretty proud of. Moving on to the next page, just providing an overview of GATX's North American Rail Operations. We have about 125,000, of that 151 are here in North America. There's approximately 160 different types of car types that we have. Our average fleet is 20 years old, which is, which we like to keep it as young as possible. We have over 800 employees, or 800 customers worldwide are in North America, and as I said, the countries that we operate in in North America are US, Canada, and Mexico. In the center of the page, you'll see some of the industries that we serve, and then on the far right-hand side is our utilization. So right now, of that 125,000 railcars that we have available, we are utilizing 99% of those cars. So it's a pretty strong indication of our market, it's a pretty strong indication of our business, and we take pride in that number. Moving along to the next page, this is our, this is our business model, and our business model is, we like to touch all phases of the railcar leasing business. So we go out and we try to capitalize in the market at the buy, new railcars where we can, we lease them out to our customers, and then we service them. And that's why we're here talking with you tonight, is we take pride in the service that we perform in our railcars, and we are going to continue to, you know, to expand those operations. And we try to maximize the value after those cars are, after we use those cars, we try to maximize the value so that we could either scrap them, and we could retire them, and we move on, and we rebuy, and we start the process all over again. On the next page, GATX has built a strong market position by focusing on what we call full-service leasing in North America. So that full-service leasing goes to the fact that not only do we provide leasing, the opportunity to lease our cars, but we also maintain the cars, we engineer new types of cars that are required. We also do quite a bit of training. As a matter of fact, we have had our tank trainer here at one point in time in Terre Haute. We spent a lot of time on that to make sure that everybody's properly trained. We look to new technology to enhance our product, and we always are obviously well aware of the regulatory constraints that are associated with our business. Moving on to the next page, GATX's North American Maintenance Network is known, we believe that we're known for integrity, safety, and quality with regard to the operations of our business. We have what are called six major, we call them major maintenance facilities in our network, which are three in the US and we have three in Canada. These are facilities where we could do every type of maintenance on a railcar that has to be done, from stripping linings to refinishing. It's, we take care of and service all of our cars, or I shouldn't say we do it all, but we're working on that. Right now, we have four what we call as field maintenance facilities, and Terre Haute currently is one of these field maintenance facilities. So it is not considered a major facility for us. The limitation being that in Terre Haute, we do not do refinishing, and in the majors, we are able to do refinishing. So that is something that, with this project, we're looking to expand. The objective here is The objective here is, if we get approval on this project, we're going to be turning the Terre Haute facility from a field maintenance organization into a major. So, it will be a major facility here in Terre Haute, and it will be a major facility as part of our network. We have a number of these mini-mobile units, we have customer location sites, so we spend a lot of money investing in the maintenance of our cars. It's obviously critical to the nature of our business. Those cars have to be functioning properly for our customer core. GATX, you know, our customers rely on us. We've, we've spent nearly seventy-nine thousand in two thousand fifteen, seventy-nine thousand maintenance events in our network. So, there's a lot of work that's associated with maintaining these cars, and we do a, a very good job at it. At that point, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to James Chapman, who's going to walk you through. You know, one last thing I wanted to just say, I think that, you know, we, like I said, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and to be presenting to you guys.
Hello. It's a, to be here and really talk to you guys a little bit about the Terre Haute facility that we have here at the end of Maple Avenue. This facility is, obviously, we've talked about it, been here since nineteen seventy-three. Right now, it's a, it's a repair center. It does mechanical repair, welding, you know, a lot of steelwork, and then the basic cleaning of cars. And over the past, I'd say, two, two years, we've done investment in this facility. We've spent, I think right here, it's talking about two thousand sixteen, but I'd say over the last eighteen months, we spent about a million and a half in this facility, just really bringing it up to speed, adding, improving the repair, as well as adding more capabilities, adding some storage for material. And really, we've added headcount, started to look at people, and bring some more people on board. We've added eight people in, in the last couple of years, and even this year, we've added a, a few more, and a little bit of preemptive thinking, we're potentially looking at this project. What I'd say, what we've done so far, is really bringing it up to speed, and it really gets us excited about what it could be, and what we could do there with your help. And, and I think this is a, a good facility with a lot of potential. It's a hundred and four acres, it has the ability to hold about four hundred railcars, and, and we don't utilize it as well as we could. Looking at, you know, we talk a lot about standard hours, I'll give you a little bit of background of what that means. I like to use to, for the analogy, if you take your car to the repair shop, they say, here's how many labor hours it is to actually do the repair. That's what we consider. And, you know, if you look at what we're proposing, we've done some growth there. Really, we're trying to leapfrog it from the thirty-one thousand hours to in the one hundred and twenty thousand hour range. And we really want to bring that, this facility up to a major facility. So, if we, if we turn to the next page, I'll kind of talk through some of the things that, that we're proposing or looking at doing. And to what Jeff, to Jeff's point, that's really bringing it to a full-service facility that can not only do some of the mechanical repairs, but can also clean a lot more of the commodities, can do all types of repairs, can paint the exterior of a car, can line the interior of a car, and really do all that, that functionality. So, we can bring in, you know, the extreme case, a, a car that's been in a, in a wreck, turn it around so it looks like it's brand-new, rolling out the back, the back of the facility. That's where we'd like it to be. With that, you're looking at a new cleaning facility to expand it. Right now, we've got one spot. We'd like to turn that into eight. We talk about finishing and adding that capability, which they don't have. There's, there's two buildings involved in that, along with, you know, paint booths, blast booths, to, to really prep the car and paint it. With the weather we have here, it's gotta all be indoors, as you can imagine. So, a decent amount of investment, and then also additional, you know, as we, as we look at growing locker rooms, office space, all those things. It's, it's been a smaller facility up till now, and if we really want to grow, we've gotta, we've gotta really invest some capital in this, in this building, and get, get to where we need to be with offices, with locker rooms, with lunchrooms, with meeting areas, with all sorts of support functionality, as well as just general infrastructure with the rail, and bring that up to speed so that we can move the cars at the, at the velocity, at the frequency that we're looking to do. That total investment is thirty-eight-point-five million dollars over four years. If we turn to the headcount piece, what I'd say is, is you really see a rapid growth, going from sixteen, we finished at twenty-three people on the total facility, to bringing it to seventy-eight people by the end of two thousand twenty. And that's a mix of, you know, production workers as well as support, production support and supervisors, so, you know, quality managers, safety managers, production managers, and, and bringing in more people to help with that functionality, HR, some other functions that, that will support the, the production in this facility. And really looking at an annual salary of two-point-three, four million dollars at this facility, in just the increase alone. So, you're talking about the, the investment and the growth that we're trying to bring. This is, you know, we've, we've started hiring some as part of just the initial infrastructure, and kind of looking at creating that pipeline to make sure we can grow. And we've partnered with Ivy Tech, as well as the, the local high school, and, and had some success there, as well as, we've had another company, Harbor Rail, that's, that's closing its doors, I think as of August thirty-first, and reached out to them, picked up a couple of employees there as well, and are looking at, you know, interviewing more. So, trying to really, you know, be a part of the community, look for, for good candidates that we can find here that want to be a part of Terre Haute, wanna, wanna see it grow, want these good paying jobs, and, and want to see it be successful. If we go to, really, as, as I talk through those skills for success, and this is where some of the partnerships come into play, is, you know, one of the things we, we talk about is, you know, you heard GATX is one of the companies you'd never hear about, and I'll admit, I didn't know about them until I started working for them. But really, a, a good foundation, a good company that looks at the qualities and characteristics of their employee. And I'll, to Ryan's horn a little bit, as a Service Center Manager there, I, I don't see very many people on our network who dedicate the time and effort that he does to his own employees, making sure they learn the skills, as he's grown through the, the shop itself and building that network. So, we're really looking for, you know, the right people. We're looking for some of those skill sets that we can build on. They do need, you know, the welding is, is probably the key skill. We're gonna start to need some painters and some other skills as we, we go forward. We're really looking for those key characteristics and those partnerships with, you know, the community, the high school, the local colleges, and the trade schools to help us bring those people on board and, and develop the talent. So... With that, I'll turn you over to the tax portion with Bill Gannon, who'll walk us through some of the, the current tax situation.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. So, my piece, I'm gonna be putting my glasses on and off because I can't see. My piece is going over what the, where we're at currently, as far as from a, from a tax standpoint, from a property tax standpoint, and where this project is headed, including with the, including the abatement part of it, and that we're requesting. So, currently, as you can see, we have a very, about nine-hundred thousand dollars or so, is what our assessed value is for two thousand seventeen. And the, the tax that we're paying currently, right now, is about thirty-six thousand, you can see, thirty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. Again, that's with the current facility and everything that, that James has mentioned before, that James has mentioned as far as what's there. So, you can see, it's a relatively small amount. In looking at both the growth and the additional value that it's going to bring to Terre Haute over this period of time, as we invest, investing in this project, that we're proposing, you can see that it's going to bring in a, a lot of additional revenue into Terre Haute as well. Looking at approximately, for the personal sign, of four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars over the next ten years, and an additional seven million dollars of additional assessed value. And, and that's on the real side. The personals, or the, or on the personal side, I'm sorry. The real side's gonna be a little bit larger, you know, if you're looking at, you know, twenty-one million dollars of investment over a ten-year period. Sure, the, the assessor has a lot of, of give. Give is a very bad word to use. They have a lot of control as far as what they assess and how it's assessed, and we do not know how that is going to turn out. So, we can estimate where, where it would, where it would be over a ten-year period. And we're looking at the additional taxes coming into Terre Haute on top of that, is another three-point-one million dollars, as far as what we would be paying over the abatement period. So, as you can see, with possibility of developing this project, the, it's going to grow the overall assessment value, once the, once the abatement is over, to roughly between from nine-hundred thousand up to maybe between twenty to twenty-three million dollars, an additional amount that there's, and be able to assess, which would mean the, the potential annual increase is probably somewhere in the area, once the abatement would be over, is an additional between five-hundred to five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars additional, on, on top of what we're, on top of what we're already paying. So, that's where we're at. Do you have any questions? The other part that, that's really huge with GATX, and it comes from, from the top down, and I am really proud to be able to work with a company that, that focuses on this effort, is, is the charitable work that, that is done. From a corporate standpoint, GATX, as far as in the corporate office, is the largest contributor to the Illinois Make-A-Wish Foundation. We have huge drive every year, and, and we support it. And in fact, a lot of our senior executives, CEOs, executive vice presidents, serve on the boards of Make-A-Wish. And we've donated in that period of time, over the last five years, probably over one-point-five million dollars to the Illinois Make-A-Wish Fund. So, it's, it's inherent in our culture to help and work with that. We also work with Big Shoulders, and I'm not sure if you know of Big Shoulders, if you're familiar with it. It's a Catholic charity in Chicago that deals with providing inner-city kids with an opportunity for an education, a proper education. And what we do with those schools is, we'll adopt two schools a year, and we'll work, and we will have service days where the entire corporate office goes to these schools, and we'll clean them, we'll paint them, we'll do landscaping, and various other, other items. The other items that we do in there is, we also work with the schools as far as tutoring. So, we'll have a group that goes during the school year, and we're from four to six people over a week, a week, and they'll go out to the schools and sit with the schools and read with them, and, and work with them on their reading, work with them on the vocabulary, and act as, sort of like mentors, to go through their process. This is in the, this is mostly for the younger kids. But we also go up to eighth grade. And, in Terre Haute, since it's a little smaller, we, we have our, we're developing our footprint here. And right now, we're working primarily with the first responders to, we've donated tank cars, area tank car valves and such, so the first responders know, give them something to practice on in case something happens. Hopefully, nothing will. If it does, the, the first responders there have an opportunity to practice and be able to know what to do. And also working with the, the police department as well to secure the area and meet with them on an annual basis to kind of discuss, you know, what processes are and where things are at, overall. Now, granted, it's smaller right now, but as, as it gives the opportunity to grow, there's more opportunity to be more involved with the community. The more people that we can have, the more people that we get in, the more we can get involved with the community. The other area that we're working with and, and really starting to focus on is the, is working with the schools, because we need the pipelines for welders primarily. Working with the local high schools right now, and working with Ivy Tech, giving them places where they can work on, places where they can practice. And so they know, and, and what our welding test is, because we do a different type of welding. Are you gonna jump in? You sure? Okay. Okay. And working with the, the local high, the, the high schools, to give them that, that opportunity, so they know what they're, what to expect. You know, they can walk out at eighteen, nineteen years old, you know, and, and maybe they don't want to go to college, but if they have that skill for welding, and they can perform it, and they know what to do, they can walk into GATX and work to pass that test, and, and they can start a career with a fairly hefty salary. I mean, with the base of forty-two, forty-three thousand dollars for an eighteen, nineteen-year-old kid, to be able to do that. And they can start their career at GATX, and that's what we're working with, with, within the schools, to develop that relationship, so that there, there is a pipeline for workers, with both the high schools and, and with Ivy Tech, and working with the colleges, and looking to possibly expand on into, into different areas, so that they know, you know, there's a strong opportunity with GATX, and that, once you get in there, employees stay twenty-five, thirty, forty years. I mean, it truly is an opportunity for a, for a career that they're offering these Do you have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna turn it back to, to James.
All right, sorry. I'll do the, the last kind of page as we talk about, just a summary of what we're thinking of. And, you know, we talk about railcars and the growth to eleven-hundred railcars by two thousand twenty, which would be a seventy-seven percent increase in the railcars coming through in, in that shop, and really an increase in, you know, I talked about hours, to one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand versus the thirty-one thousand that I, I mentioned before, which is a three-hundred-and-fifty-six percent increase, a pretty substantial increase in the facility, the type of work, the type of opportunities and the skills being, being practiced at this facility. It'll become our, a major facility, as Jeff talked about. This would be our first in the Midwest, and really, I think we've figured it'd be our fourth-largest of the six, if we were to do this. And really, when we look at the region, there's some good, as you can imagine, there's business reasons as well, when we're looking at this facility. The Midwest is a place where there's a deficit of support that we own and would like to make it our own. And really, if we look at where we send those cars, it's outside of Indiana to contract shops and other facilities. We'd like to bring it, bring it here, not only to our own facility, but to Indiana to do the work. And, you know, we really look at, it's, it's three-hundred-thousand tank hours that we could bring in one-hundred-and-twelve with this project. And really take a big bite out of that, bring it into our own facility, as well as to the Indiana, the Terre Haute community. So, that's, that's all we have for the presentation. Any, any questions, I guess, before I leave it? Thank you.
Does anyone from the public, they'd like to speak on Resolution fourteen, two thousand seventeen. Counsel? Counsel Morse?
I just want to commend you on going to Ivy Tech and the high schools. That's very exciting. A lot of the blue-collar workers around here getting an opportunity, so I thank you.
We've had a lot of noise lately about our state finances, so this is kind of music for our ears.
Yes, very much.
Anything else?
This is, this is one community that certainly could use locomotives and railcars that just go through as swiftly and as quietly. go through as swiftly and as quietly. We have plenty of traffic, as you know, so your work will be deeply appreciated in our community by all our citizens.
Next order of business, Michelle, please.
Resolution 15, 2017, designating an area commonly identified as 4400 Maple Avenue, Terre Haute, Indiana, is an economic utilization area for the purpose of a ten-year real property tax abatement, GATX Corporation. This is also for adoption.
I know you're excited, Lou. Hold on just a second.
While Lou's up here, I want to acknowledge Lou's work through his service to the Department of Redevelopment. There's a lot of rail easement work and so on that Lou worked with GATX's attorney on, so we really appreciate that, Lou. And then Eddie as well has done a lot of work, so they've both had a very important part in this process. I think everything's already been said, but I don't even want me to shut up. I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, four of these gentlemen came all the way from Chicago. They have enough respect for this body and this process to come here in person and present their corporation. It's just been a pleasure to deal with them. We're very fortunate to have them in our community, and I just can't say enough nice sayings about GATX and all the folks.
Thank you. Would you like to go left to Resolution 15 and do the whole thing again?
You know, I'd like to have a tour once that thing is built, so.
I like your hairstyle.
Yeah. I would love it.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Resolution 15, 2017? Counsel? Thank you. Next order of business, Michelle.
Resolution 18, 2017, designating an area commonly identified as 1001, 1009, 1025. Wabash Avenue, Terre Haute, Indiana, is an economic utilization area for the purpose of an eight-year real property tax abatement. Prycer Properties LLC, this is also for adoption.
This is kind of East Wabash month for me, I guess. Two East Wabash properties, kind of back-to-back between the mission and this project. My name is Lou Britton. With me this evening also is Ken Sensman, who's one of the principals of your petitioner, Prycer Properties. Prycer is proposing to construct a thirteen-thousand-square-foot office and warehouse building at 1001, 1009, 1025 Wabash Avenue. For reference, it's the property bounded on the east by Eleventh Street and on the west by Tenth and a Half Street. South of Wabash, used to be Arby's, before that, it was, I forget, and there was a Home Healthcare at the corner of Tenth and a Half and Wabash, Harkness Home Healthcare. Okay. Now, I want to be clear, if you look at your statement of benefits, you'll see there's some asterisks on there, and the employment numbers and the payroll numbers, and Prycer Properties is the property owner and will lease the property to Lee Equipment Company. The employees will be the employees of Lee Equipment Company, not Prycer Properties. And to give you a little background about Lee Company, Lee Company, by the way, the principals of Lee Company own Prycer Properties. It was set up simply as a vehicle to do this project. Lee Company's been headquartered in Terre Haute since 1932. In 1977, they relocated from 119 South Third Street, which is the site of the rallies, there's a hamburger theme here, to their present location at 27 South 12th Street. Lee Company is a specialty contractor that works with schools, universities, medical facilities, and industrial and manufacturing facilities to do primarily interior construction, cabinet work, and that sort of thing in new construction and remodeling. In addition to furnishing desks and chairs, they provide interior finishes, lockers, auditorium seating, and athletic equipment. They have annual sales of eighteen to twenty-two million dollars. More than ninety-five percent of their sales are outside Vigo County. So this is a business which brings money into the community, it doesn't just stir around inside the community. As I said, they're proposing the construction of a thirteen-thousand-square-foot steel office warehouse facility. It is all steel construction. The projected cost is nine-hundred thousand dollars. It will permit Lee Company to maintain their current payroll of twenty-eight employees with an annual payroll of approximately two-point-one million dollars, should create two additional jobs with an annual payroll of a hundred thousand dollars. It's worth noting that in addition to those twenty-eight employees, Lee Company has eighteen union carpenters who work out of union halls across the state on their projects, on an almost full-time basis for Lee Company. They have another sixteen carpenters who work through union halls for significant portions of the year in connection with their installation work. Those numbers were not included in the headcount that I gave you earlier. The total payroll for those additional employees is in excess of a million, one-hundred thousand dollars a year, and those are union employees. The abatement sought is an eight-year real property abatement based on the scoring sheet utilized by the council. With the exception of an existing small wet laundry, this property has been vacant for a number of years and is under-improved and frankly, not the most attractive piece of property in the world. Lee Company will maintain its current building. They will not be vacating that building. They will stay in and continue to utilize that building on 12th Street. They also are going to construct this building on the back half of the lot. Remember, it runs all the way from Tenth and a Half to Eleventh. They will be building on the back half adjacent to the alley, which leaves the front half open for retail development right along Wabash Avenue. And hopefully, there will be some development. They don't have anything in the works, but it's available and for development, and hopefully will develop in the future. Obviously, the project will improve the works of that parcel, which would have been difficult to develop because previously had been in the hands of three separate people. They've managed to acquire all of it. There's actually one strip that runs kind of down the middle of that, that's like twenty feet wide, which created a nightmare in trying to get the title straightened out and try to get it all brought into one hand. In any event, the petitioner is seeking an eight-year abatement. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Resolution 18, 2017? Counsel?
Ken.
Counselor Morse?
I just want to take a short note here. The Sessman family are big contributors to Terre Haute, charitable-wise and business-wise, good family. They've been here for a while. I fully support these.
Counselor Dubon?
Yeah, you touched on it. I was going to ask, and I was thinking about it. This property has been vacant for quite a while. I was trying to recall how long, I'm thinking, well, at least fifteen years. I've been dragged by that for a while, and it's really an eyesore, I think, so I would also like to see something, but this, this sounds like a good thing. Are you up?
Thank you.
I just had a question regarding the, it looks like you're gonna put an all-still building there. I'm just looking at the, you know, how the rest of downtown is and how that would fit there. Why that kind of building?
Well, they need, they need the interior, they will have a loading dock as well, they need the interior headroom and floor, you know, clear space for their warehousing operation, which will be the primary use of that facility. That's the reason for it being steel. But as I said, they will set it back on the alley so that hopefully, there will, there will be plenty of room to develop right on Wabash a retail use or something of that nature, which would probably be a different sort of construction. So if that happens, this building would be screened for Wabash.
Well, thank you. Next order of business, please.
Resolution 19, 2017, designating an area commonly identified as 1055 South Fifth Street, Terre Haute, Indiana, is an economic utilization area for the purpose of a ten-year personal property tax abatement. TriAerospace LLC, this is for adoption.
I'm just gonna go ahead and make a few connections. This is Tim Conrad. He's an economic development consultant with a company called Stimulus, and we've been chatting with TriAerospace about an expansion. Again, TriAerospace is a company that does a lot more in the community than people realize. They deal with the who's who of the aviation world in regard to jet engine components and so on, and with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your time. As Steve mentioned, my name's Tim Conrad. I'm a tax advisor for TriAerospace. They have a facility on 1055 South Hunt Road, just on the western border of the airport there. They are part of M2M Group, which is a Wisconsin-based equity group in the manufacturing space. They have three shops, one in Wisconsin, one in Illinois, and then TriAerospace here in Terre Haute. Their core business is machining specifically for the aerospace industry. So their product is generally one of two things, prototyping, so they get into a lot of military work and low-volume production runs. They're not cranking out ten thousand units a month like an auto parts supplier or anything like that. So they are truly advanced, high-volume ad manufacturing. This project would see TriAerospace be designated as the premier aerospace manufacturer amongst the three sister organizations, and with that, there's a little bit of a chicken-and-egg issue that if you get the machine, the clients will come. So they're going into this pretty aggressively and putting in a lot of production equipment. Their plan is to put in just under eight million dollars of production equipment, so lathes, mills, five-axis CNC machines, things of that nature. Over the next three years, the project would carry with it some pretty good wages. They'd be retaining thirty-eight positions that are paying twenty-one dollars an hour before benefits, and creating twenty-two new positions paying twenty-two dollars an hour before benefits. So thank you for your consideration of their request for abatement, and if there are any questions, more than happy to answer those.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Resolution 19, 2017? Counsel? Again, thank you for investing in our communities. These are the kind of things we like to talk about. Thank you.
Move to adjourn. Okay.
Bear with me a second. I'm confirming what time we set, that we have the public hearing. Mr. President, I'm sorry. Mr. President, I just want to remind everybody that there is a public hearing next week, and it is on the fourteenth, and my phone is going very slow, at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Michelle.
Do you have anything else before I move to adjourn?
Have a nice weekend.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, wait, wait a minute. I apologize. The public hearing is at 5:30.
5:30 it is.
Yes.
I move to adjourn again.
It's been moved that we adjourned by Counselor Azar, second by Counselor Dubon. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.